Call to order, our regularly meeting at the Beverly City Council on Monday, October 5th, 2020. Ms. Dixon, who's filling in for Ms. Kemp this evening, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Yes, here.
Yeah, here. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Here.
Hausman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
Here.
Councilor Hausman, would you please listen to the Pledge of Allegiance and then just let's take a moment of silence to remember our everybody's good friend, Mr. Lee Royer Redd. Hi, please. Councilor Hausman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I know that Council Flaherty was very close to Mr. Hut. Tim, would you like to say a couple of words about Redd? I think it's bidding.
Sure. You know, I still call him Mr. Hut. You know, he was been around, you know, working at the shoe for many years and then he owned his the liquor store in North Beverly. But what most everybody remembers him far as what he did at the high school as equipment manager, yeah, who he was taking care of, treated everybody fairly, and he always did the right thing and he was a great role model for so many people. But more importantly, from close to home, he set myself up with my wife. So I always really special for that. My wife came to from Buffalo when she was like 22 and didn't know anybody and he took her on like a daughter and so but I was lucky enough somehow to he introduced me to her. And now, you know, 30 years later, I'm still married and four kids, so I owe a lot to him. But he was such a great man and again, he took care of everybody. He didn't care what sport you were playing or whether you didn't play a sport. He just took care of a lot of great people and he was he was kind of a fixture in Beverly, which he'd be greatly missed. You don't make them like him anymore.
You're right. Thanks for sharing that, Council Flaherty. And I guess 20, whatever it was, 30 years ago, Aunt Flaherty became the luckiest girl of us, right? All right, let's move right into if Ms. Dixon, are you ready? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meeting that was held on Monday, September 21st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
In a roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Communications from his honor, the mayor. Ms. Dixon?
Wait, did I miss? Did you do the whole thing about? Yeah, you're gonna read that?
Again, damn it. Oh, it's like my first day. Hello, everyone. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, October 5th. Christine, you hung me out to dry already. It'll be a long night.
Yeah, I pointed it out. I was supposed to be clear.
Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, who is the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Good. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order is to suspend the requirement of the open meeting law, but have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely, and you've all done a great job. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. We do have four public hearings this evening. Please note this meeting is being recorded and televised live and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read everyone's favorite, Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation and no report as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be with forth return to the council. So we'll take a roll call of vote, and for those of you watching at home, that means that anything that we have in one of our three subcommittees, Public Services, Legal Affairs, and Finance and Property, comes out to the full floor and we can act on it then, only if we have a majority vote. So Ms. Dixon, could we have a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. We have public hearings, so we'll read meeting ground rules for public hearings. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute/unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties and strictly the city council. It's not for public comment. And once everybody on the city council has asked their questions or made comments, then we'll open up to people on that have signed up to speak for each agenda item. For any response, please state your name and affiliation before speaking. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Dixon. Now, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Okay, Order 207. Dear September 30th, 2020, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $135,445 Coastal Resilience Program Grant from Coastal Zone Management. This grant funding will be used to conduct a vulnerability assessment and feasibility study for the Beverly Pump Station on Water Street. This grant requires a 25% match, which has been identified within the sewer enterprise budget. The Beverly Pump Station on Water Street is a critical piece of infrastructure as a sanitary sewage facility that serves Beverly, Danvers, and several other entities. The Beverly Pump Station pumps sanitary sewage out of Beverly into the South Essex Sewage District's wastewater treatment facility in Salem. This vulnerability assessment and feasibility study will analyze the pump station, evaluate both short-term measures, and address short-term protection options, and evaluate several long-term scenarios, and provide alternatives and recommendations on how best to address the pump station. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your October 5th meeting. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
And I know our grant director is here, Ms. Barrett. Do you want to address each of these individually briefly?
You want me to just start with the first one or do all four or five?
Do one. Do the one first.
Okay. The first one is a grant for, I thank you, Mr. President, the first one's a grant for the Water Street Pump Station, which is a critical asset for the city and some surrounding towns that it serves. And so we were thrilled to get this grant. It was a tremendous amount of work from Emily Hutchins, who's our Assistant Planning Director, and Eric Barber, who's our City Engineer. And so congratulations to both of them, and we had a great team on it, and we're very excited to get the funding.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Questions before I ask for a motion to approve the request? Oh, chat, okay. I did read the script. Thank you, Councilor Hausman. And Councilor Hausman on Order Number 207, thank you.
I guess thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of the administration on this. I have mentioned a number of different times the vulnerability or apparent vulnerability of this particular pump station, given its location. During storm events, the water gets pretty high close to this location. And so I'm very glad that the city's been able to get a grant to study resiliency and to protect this. So I just want to comment on that, thank the administration for its work, and say this is a this is an important piece of our infrastructure. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Anybody else? Councilor Ames?
I believe Councilor Rand is ahead of me.
Ah, yes, she is. I don't know how that happened. Councilor Rand?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Ames, too. I just wanted to ask very quickly, did our success in getting this grant relate at all to the citywide vulnerability study that we completed? I don't, I'm not sure if that's even the right term, actually, but I know we have other studies happening, but there was that initial one that identified vulnerable points. Was that a requirement for getting this grant?
Ms. Barrett?
I don't believe it was a requirement, but we did highlight that in the grant application, that that it is a vulnerable asset that we would like to protect and secure because it services several towns and cities.
Do you see that that vulnerability study helping us to secure other grants like this in the future? That's a bit off topic, sorry, but I'm curious.
There are some grant applications that do ask if we have feasibility or vulnerability studies in place. And in fact, if you don't have those in place, you're not typically eligible to apply for a grant. Though in some cases, it is critical that we have these studies in place before we can actually apply for actually actual project dollars.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Cahill, jump in.
Yeah, if I could. It is, it's my understanding, and I'll double check on this, Councilor Rand, and get back to you. I'll get back to all of you. It's my understanding that, for example, the Climate Action Planning Grant that we put in for required that we had done the MVP. But we'll double check on that because I could be I could be misremembering. So we'll definitely get back to you because I think that I think that is the case. There are certain things that we needed to get that that MVP plan done initially. So I'll get back to you, though, to verify.
Thank you. Councilor Rand?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering, once we do this study, and if our there are vulnerabilities identified that need action taken, what would be the next steps? Thank you.
So I can I can take this if you want, Ms. Barrett. Yeah, so this, I mean, this is very simple, really. Every our whole sanitary sewer system, right? All the all the wastewater, not the stormwater, but all the sanitary sewer from all the buildings in the city come to a point here at this at this pump station. There are a dozen or so main lines that come in from all other parts of the city. And as Ms. Barrett said, also serving Danvers and a small part of Wenham, including Gordon College. And so we know that we have a vulnerability with sea level rise over there at the underwater street at Sandy Point at that pump station. So this will give us, you know, give us really answers on how best to to protect that asset because everything everything needs to be pumped from there directly under under Salem Harbor through a main line over to the sewage treatment plant. So yeah, the goal is this process that this grant will will allow us to undertake will get us to an answer as to just how to best protect that asset for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but curiously, what would be the process for the funding to actually take action for the repair?
Well, I know it may be something we can we can tap for the grant opportunities to help with, but typically, the any infrastructure work that has to do with with any part of the sewer district's apparatus or infrastructure is covered by the the rate payers. And in this instance, it would be the Beverly rate payers and the Danvers and those in Wenham, because it doesn't really, it's not really an impact on the other communities, but it is on ours. So I think we would, you know, we would be looking for other opportunities by way of grants, but we would expect that at least some part, maybe significant part, would be planned for through the rates, which which are how the the district handles infrastructure upgrades and improvements, you know, year over year over time. And that's we plan for that when we look at the rates and, you know, and how to manage them as well.
Thank you.
All good? I would entertain a motion to approve the request for the grant, to accept the grant.
So moved. Second.
Second roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, on to Order 208, Ms. Dixon.
208, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $58,340 Coastal Resilience Program Grant from the Coastal Zone Management. This grant funding will be used to conduct a feasibility assessment and conceptual designs for green infrastructure and resilience improvements at Ober Park. This grant requires a 25% match, which has been identified within the recreation operating budget. This feasibility assessment and conceptual designs for green infrastructure and resilience-focused improvements is the first part of a multi-phase project to establish a path forward and install green infrastructure and retrofits to protect the park and surrounding natural surrounding natural environment from climate change impacts. Climate change has caused erosion to the park shoreline and has negatively impacted the salt marsh along the park's northeast boundary. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your October 5th, 2020 meeting. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a coastal resiliency program grant. We received two of them, Water Street Pump Station as well as Ober Park. And our team included Emily Hutchings, our Assistant Planning Director, and Lisa Chandler, who's one of our engineers in Engineering Department. And and this again is for feasibility study and then green infrastructure, resiliency solutions at Ober Park, which has had some erosion concerns for many years now. And so we were very happy to receive this grant. And again, once this study is complete, we can then move forward with a project to address what what they identify as the needs are at this location.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. I have a question from Councilor Hausman.
Yes, a comment and a question. First, again, congratulations to our city staff and their hard work for putting together and getting this grant. Certainly, I'll let Councilor Rotundo speak to Ober Park. Just to put a plug in for another park, Lynch Park, both the Carriage House, which needs some funding, but also the resiliency and vulnerability studies that were alluded to earlier by Councilor Rand, identified a great deal of vulnerability of Lynch Park based upon projections for seawater rise, close to half, if not more of the what we know as the grass area in front of the half shell would be underwater based upon some of the projections. So just an encouragement to our our stellar grant coordinator to try to get some money to see what we can do about Lynch Park as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Eric Barber, Emily Hutchins, and Jennifer Roden, all three of them came and met me one Thursday to kind of get back on track of what was going on. I know the mayor's been very involved with this whole process. I know we've gotten a lot of emails about the erosion, particularly they make mentions of a sign. So I know it's a step forward. I know it's only the beginning. I know it's some people are a little confused thinking that this money was, you know, towards actual construction or, you know, rocks or sand being added. But the fact is just it's the starting phase of identifying what is being used. So I want to commend them coming out and kind of giving me a better explanation. I think there's been a lot of stories been told over all the years between past councilors. And so now I think we're all kind of at a new starting point moving forward. So it's great to see that this is finally being addressed. I know it's going to take a lot more work, but it's great to see that, you know, that is being recognized. And I want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Dixon?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Order 209, Ms. Dixon.
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $2,166.67 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the fire and police departments to purchase naloxone and related naloxone and medical supplies.
Naloxone.
Thank you. And medical supplies to respond to opioid crisis-related calls. This grant award amount represents the first of multiple grant allocations that will be awarded during FY '21. The Department of Public Health has not determined a final total grant award at this point and will distribute awarded grants grants funds on a monthly basis. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your October 5th, 2020 meeting. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a grant that the police department does receive each year. Usually, we see we receive a $20,000 grant. And this year, the Department of Public Health has decided that they're going to award the grant amounts on a monthly basis. So it'll roughly be about $2,000 a month, and hopefully, by the end of the year, it'll be $20,000 or a hair more than that. So you will probably see this come in front of the council monthly, and it is for naloxone, which the police and fire departments use to respond to overdose victims to save lives.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any questions? There are none, no questions. I would entertain a motion to approve and accept the grant.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Order Number 210.
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the Friendly Garden Club of Beverly would like to gift the installation of a sprinkler system for the Landman Memorial Garden at the Beverly Public Library. The cost of this work has been quoted at $3,813.11 by Flags Landscape and Irrigation. This garden is a beautiful tribute to former garden club member Chris Landman and greatly enhances the grounds of the main library. This donation would result in an improved garden by providing regulated water to the plants and grass at this location. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request city council to accept and approve this gift by taking action on this matter at your October 5th, 2020 meeting. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
And any questions or comments on this one? I would entertain a motion to accept the gift on behalf of the city. You want to talk again?
No, I just wanted to refer to our library director, Allison Babin, just to say a couple words about this donation, if that's okay.
Right, I forgot that she was here. Allison, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, City Council. This is a very generous donation from the Friendly Garden Club that I'm thrilled that they want to do this, and I think it will further beautify our already beautiful library grounds. So I would love if we were able to accept this donation.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from Ms. Babin? Allison, how you liking your job? You getting everything done?
I love my job.
Yeah, but COVID's made it a lot tougher, but you're open now?
It's different, but yes, yes.
And what services can you provide our citizens now during this during the pandemic at this stage?
On Mondays and Fridays, you can make an appointment to come into the library to browse, to use the computer, or to use the children's room. And Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, you can come by for front door service to pick up holds, and we also do pop-ups outside, so you can browse materials outside.
Great.
Addition to that, virtual programs, ebooks, audiobooks, I could go on and on, but...
No, well, that's good because we do have people to tune in and watch our meetings, and BevCam shows them throughout the week, well, the two weeks before our next meeting, and hopefully, somebody's watching that can benefit from that information. And Councilor Hausman has a comment.
Just a question to clarify, the Order 210 refers to the cost of the work. I'm not sure it's clear that is the cost of the work, the size also of the donation that's being provided? Is it one and the same number?
Yes, I believe it is, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
The Garden Club is picking up the tab. That's great.
Correct.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Around the rest of the night if you want. If not, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Ms. Dixon, let's do a couple more, please.
Um, we didn't do the vote on that one, right?
Oh, yeah, we didn't vote, right. Make a motion.
Second, the motion.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, and I apologize for that. I don't seem to be on my game tonight. I'm going to refocus. Ms. Dixon, 211.
211. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following citizens to serve as trustees on the David Lynch Public Parks Foundation, Ms. Joan Faribault, 11 Liberty Street, and Mr. Kevin Hobbin, 6th Gardner Street. Their terms are to be effective until September 30th, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Public Services. And why don't we take a little break right there, and we'll go to our first public hearing, which is scheduled for 7:30. So I am going to call to order a public hearing on Order Number 190.[1781.04]
In coordination with Finance Director Bryant Ailes, the CPC reviewed the attached budget at its August 20th, 2020 meeting and voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend its adoption. The CPC respectfully requests that the City Council consider approving the budget as proposed. At the same Community Preservation Committee meeting referenced above, the CPC voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend funding in the amount of $700,000 as requested jointly by project developers, Harbor Light Community Partners, and Beacon Communities for the project known as Briscoe Village for Living and Arts. HCP and Beacon Communities had requested these funds to support the construction of new affordable housing rental units and the preservation of a historic resource. The members of the CPC enthusiastically supported this project, given both HCPs and Beacon Communities' strong reputation as developers and managers of affordable housing. The committee was also impressed with the scope of this project, which includes 85 units of affordable senior housing in addition to six market-rate live-work studios with a preference for artists, the preservation of historically significant architectural elements, and the preservation and creation of passive and active recreational space. The CPC voted that the proposed project met general CPA funding criteria, criteria as an out-of-cycle project, as well as category-specific criteria for a project encompassing both community housing and historic resources. Given that remaining CPA funds budgeted for FY '20 are not sufficient to support a $700,000 appropriation, the CPC voted to recommend that the City Council appropriate the remaining balance in its FY '20 Community Housing Reserve Fund and the remaining balance in its FY ' '20 General Reserve Fund for this project. Upon approval of the CPA FY '21 budget by the Beverly City Council, the CPC voted to recommend the appropriation of the CPA FY '21 Community Housing Reserve Balance and the CPA FY '21 Historic Preservation Reserve Balance to the project, with the remainder coming from the CPA FY '21 General Reserve Fund Balance. As you are aware, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, a public hearing must be scheduled prior to any City Council vote is taken on this order. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to contact the committee through its staff, Denise, sorry, DeChamps, and the planning board, respectfully submitted by Beverly Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. Not yet, Councilor Flowers. Mr. Ailes, let's deal with number 190 first, the CPC budget that we have to approve. Mr. Brian Ailes, our Finance Director is here, as well as Ms. Heather Richter, who is an active member of the CPC Committee. Mr. Ailes.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors, and anybody who might be viewing this evening. Order 190 is somewhat of a procedural process that we do annually. It sets the current year budget for the CPC and effectively allows those funds to become available for appropriation pending the recommendation of the CPC, as well as an approval from your body, the City Council. The budget that is proposed this evening for you represents the expected revenues that we anticipate taking in over the course of FY '21, which goes from July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 2021. We expect to bring in a hair under $1 million at $977,181, and we collect that through a combination of an affixed value on the property taxes that individuals pay, as well as a match component, which is based on last year's collections that comes through the state and distributed by the Department of Revenue. So those two sources combined make an anticipated $977,181, of which the budget proposes to, along, to be in line with the statute requirements, 10% of that value to be set aside in three areas, the Historic Resources Reserve, the Community Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve. The remaining 70% of the available resources is split, 3% going to an administrative budget, and the remainder, which comprises about $650,000 of that amount, will be set aside in a fund balance reserve available for appropriation, any of the categories noted. So I request your approval this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this procedurally or financially.
Okay, Ms. Richter, did you add about the CPC budget this year? Working on that microphone, this is all new for us still. Ms. Dixon, can we unmute? Ms. Richter?
I don't think I can.
We can't. Okay, while Ms. Richter's working on her microphone, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ailes? Councilor Hausman?
Yes, Mr. Ailes, could you just clarify if the, if the council approves the $750,000 funding request, what will be the remaining balance?
Councilor Hausman, we have to be careful. That's our next, our next public hearing. All we're being asked to do is approve the budget, and Councilor Flowers can't be in the room if we're talking about order number 191.
Thank you very much for the clarification, Mr. President. I'll withdraw my question and wait.
You'll have plenty of time to answer. Ms. Richter, I think we're going to approve the budget without you, though, but you can talk at the next one. Does anybody have any questions to specific, or specific to order number 190, the public hearing on the CPC budget? Does any member of the public wish to make a comment on that? Councilor Ames is here. Councilor Ames.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, so essentially, the $650,000 fund balance is what will be put forth in this budget? Is that what, is that, are those the funds we're talking about, or am I, again, in the wrong lane?
You're close, Councilor Ames. The appropriation is for the full $977. So this will, this will make available $977,181. Only $654,000 of that will be set aside in the fund balance. The remainder will be set aside in statutory obligated reserves that are a minimum of 10% of the total revenue. So the appropriation is for $977,181.
Okay. And so, I think I, so it's basically, we're taking that $650,000 approximately and appropriating it, but the whole budget, but you're saying that the balance up to $977 is already spoken for with other projects?
So I appreciate the question because sometimes I take, I take for granted that we've all been through this process numerous times, and right now I'm realizing there are a few councilors that this is actually the first time we've done this. We're required to raise and appropriate these funds prior to setting the tax rate. We can do it at any point up until we set the tax rate. We're in the process of setting the tax rate. So if we don't identify these funds as potentially available before we set the tax rate, we lose the ability to use any of these funds for this fiscal year. So this is just an effort to set this money aside and make it quote-unquote "available" for whatever project you all deem, under the recommendation of the CPC, appropriate for the use of these funds. It doesn't obligate any of these funds to anything. It can remain unspent if you so choose, or it can be designated to specific projects.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Very good. So you weren't in the wrong lane, you just needed to put your blinker on and straighten out. Ms. Richter, your microphone is on.
Thank you. Thank you, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
I have nothing really to add to Brian's, Mr. Ailes' explanation. I just wanted to thank the City Council and the city officials for all the help they give us concerning the Community Preservation Committee. We have fantastic staff, and we have all the help we need, so thank you.
Thank you, you do great work. Why don't we go, before we move on to our next public hearing, let's go to our Budget Analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, for a comment on this, that it's a financial matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's well out there. Very quickly, everything Brian said, I agree 100%. It's a procedural thing, you're establishing the budget, he's right about the three categories, you got to set aside certain amount of reserves. Everything is spot on. From my perspective, I would recommend to the council to adopt the recommendation of Mr. Ailes.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any questions for Mr. Perry? Did we already ask members of the public if they wanted to speak on this one? I think we did. So I would entertain a motion, I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Ailes' request to set the budget for the CPC Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Clarity.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Brady's.
Yes.
Hausman.
Yes.
Rand.
Yeah.
Rotundo.
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes, so now we'll close our public hearing there. Mr. Ailes, seeing that Ms. Dixon already read the order for number 191, do you want to introduce that piece?
Sure, I'm happy to, Mr. President. Order number 191 effectively seeks to appropriate some of the funds that have been set aside for the CPC for a particular project related to the reuse of the Briscoe Middle School. I do know Mr. DeFranza is here this evening to talk about the specifics around the project, as well as members from the CPC to talk about those specifics, but before, before I offer that to you, I'd just like to deal with the mechanics of what it is we're requesting this evening.
Mr. Ailes, let me interrupt so Councilor Flowers can accuse herself.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure I officially sit on the record that I am recusing myself from this discussion and the vote on this order. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Ailes, thank you.
So the request that's before you this evening requests $700,000 of CPC resources, and the, the funding for that amount comes from a couple of different areas that exist right now. About, well, I'll give you the exact figure, $299,137 of that request comes from previous year fund balances of the CPC. The remaining $400,863, we are recommending come from the budget for FY '21 that this council just approved moments ago. And so those two sources combined would create enough resources to be able to grant this $700,000 request to Harbor Light and Beacon Properties in support of the project at the former Briscoe site. So I'm happy to answer specific questions about that. I would just note, in light of Councilor Hausman's earlier question, that this funding, if approved of $700,000, would exhaust all of the previous year's available resources, with the exception of the, the Open Space Reserve, which still remains untouched since the inception of the CPC, since it was adopted. So the only remaining balance from previous fiscal years would be roughly a $610,000 balance in that particular reserve, which will still remain set aside for future use. And as for what would be left of the FY '21 budget, which the council just approved, that would be, bear with me a second here, a few papers in front of me, it would be roughly about $577,000 spread amongst a couple of different categories that would remain available until the closeout of the fiscal year. So hopefully that answers your question, Councilor Hausman, that you asked earlier, but I'm happy to get into more details if needed.
Any question, additional questions for Mr. Ailes? Councilor Hausman. He looks pained because we can't hear him. Councilor Hausman, you need to unmute. There you are.
Mr. President?
Yes, we hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a lag in my, in my reception, so I'm gathering you recognize me?
I am recognizing you.
I'm sorry.
But you're all recognizing you once.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm missing a lot of, of what you're saying. So back to my question to Mr. Ailes, would you please recap what you said would be left in the fiscal 2020 fund balance for CPC and its breakdown? You mentioned that in the beginning of your remarks.
Yes, so the fiscal 2020 budget is gone. That, that ended at June 30th. So that basically gets swept into the overall fund balance. And so prior to this vote, what remains of the fund balance, there's, there's basically two buckets. You've got the fund balance, and then you've got the budget that was just approved. The fund balance, which embodies every prior fiscal year's unspent money, prior to this vote, has remaining in it $610,759 in the Open Space Reserve, $23,000 in the Community Housing Reserve, and $276,137 in the overall fund balance and the remaining fund balance. This appropriation seeks to exhaust the remaining fund balance of $276,137, as well as the Community Housing Reserve of $23,000. That, those two combined comprise $299,137 of the $700,000 request before you this evening. The remaining $400,863 would, would come from the FY '21 budget that was just approved by the council in three different areas. First, it would exhaust the, the housing reserve for an appropriation of $97,718. It would exhaust the, bear with me here, it's in the communication that was, was presented. It would exhaust $97,718 from the Historic Preservation Reserve, and it would deplete $205,427 from the remaining fund balance that was just approved earlier.
So my, my question is, in part then, to clarify my understanding about the three different reserves, Historic Community and Open Space Reserve, my statute would require to retain 10%, a reserve of 10%, I'm not sure of what number, but 10% of a number. The, the, the request for appropriation in front of us would retain that 10% in each of those reserves, number one, question number one. And number two, what would be the balance of, that represents those 10% in each of those three categories, each reserve?
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Ailes, you can help me with this or correct me, but I think, Counselor, the requirement is, is that each year, with that year's amount, at least 10% go into each of the three accounts? Now, that can grow if there's no spending in a given account. in a given account from, you know, in, in a given year, so it grows to the next year. But it can be spent down to zero at any time, those three accounts. It's just, it, it needs to go in there at a minimum 10%, right? The point was, the three different priorities within community preservation, there needs to be a minimum each year that's dedicated to. So any one of those accounts can be tapped and spent down to zero for that purpose, and then the next year, you're going to put at least 10% in there again. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, uh, given the proposed appropriation, what will be the remaining fund balance in each of these three categories if this appropriation is approved by the council?
Mr. Ailes?
So I'm doing some quick math here. So if, if you don't mind me rhyming, rounding to the nearest thousand. Um, uh, so we would have 708,000, uh, roughly available, um, after, let's assume this got approved, you'd have 708,000 total available within the open space reserve. You would have zero in the historic resource reserve and zero in the open space, uh, I'm sorry, in the community housing reserve. The remaining fund balance that would be available for anything within the CPC purview, including historic, including housing, um, that would be brought down to 450,000 remaining in total.
Thank you. You, you broke up a little bit, but what I heard was 708,000, uh, 708,000 in open space, zero in community housing, and I didn't, couldn't hear the rest of it.
Zero in community housing, zero in historic resource, and the fund balance would have $450,000 left.
Okay, thank you very much. That was my, those were my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Husband. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes, there's also a recreational category, right?
It's not a specific recreational category, Counselor. It's a category, it's an allowable use of, um, of the open space reserve in some instances.
Okay. So the question is, um, the CPA committee feels comfortable, they voted unanimously to approve this, and you guys feel comfortable, uh, moving this forward. You don't see any, is this, this is a big number, um, but this has been done before, the size of a number going forward, and do you feel comfortable, because there are other categories, um, and might be for future use, you see anything coming, uh, in the, in the future, do you feel comfortable, uh, with this number? And that's not necessarily, uh, it's probably towards the CPA committee, I would believe. With Hama?
Yes. Um, so, yes, so, hi. This is probably, this is among the biggest projects that we have, would have funded. It's a very large project, and we understand that, um, the city is very enthusiastic about the project, and the CPC is also extremely excited to be a part of this project. We think it's a major project for the city, and we are, um, and in, in funding our little piece of it, our little 1.7% of the project, we would enable a much larger project to be accomplished. The total project is costing in the region of $42 million. So with all that said, um, yes, we feel comfortable with this. We feel that, um, we haven't, we haven't heard from any of the boards or commissions about similarly giant projects coming down the pike in the next year. So we feel comfortable that whatever projects do come towards us can be funded with our 450,000 or thereabouts remaining dollars in the fund.
Good, thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Mr. President, if I could also add, um, as, as you folks remember, when the, when the responses to the RFP came in and we selected the, the Harbor Light Beacon, uh, proposal, it had in there, uh, you know, both an ask to our Affordable Housing Trust, as well as this ask of CPA funds.
Right.
And so, you know, we recognized and understood that this would be a necessary piece of the financing. And I'd say, just as a reminder to all of us, values that the community raised as being of utmost importance in this process were to hold on to the open space, the field behind and, and the, the, um, I want to use the right terminology, but that, that kind of wedge-shaped, um, grassy area in front, the, the bowl. Um, and so we'll be, we'll be, you know, keeping ownership of that. Uh, then there's also the historic preservation of the building. We all wanted to see the building renovated, not torn down. And then the deep, long-term affordability to our senior population in all units in the building. So those are the things that really make this a project that is complicated in its financing and really, I think, justifies the CPC having taken this step of, of coming to you for approval, uh, of this expenditure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Can you hear me already?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Um, I, I guess this is more of an echo of the sentiment that, um, the mayor just shared and echoing the, the CPAs, the CPC committee's, um, support for this project. I think it's, it's probably a rare project that could actually pull from so many pools of the CPA funds and for, um, this project to actually be able to use that funding and produce, I think it's, what, 85 units of housing, um, deeply affordable housing plus six units of artist housing plus preserve open space. I, I just think it's amazing, and I'm, I'm glad that we can support that funding. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. And don't forget the auditorium. It might be the last piece of the puzzle.
And the auditorium.
But it, it's amazing.
You're right, the historic preservation aspect. It's just, it's really so neat that it can, can use all of, this is like a massive project that was just made for CPA funds. So, thank you for your work on that.
Right. And all the years that we've, that I've been involved, this is really one of the most exciting projects that we've ever had before us. Um, Counselor Ames?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have, um, a couple of questions for, um, Mr. DeFranza and for the CPC, um, committee here. First, thank you for all your hard work. This is an exciting project. It sits right in the middle of Ward 3. So I, that's a great thing. I, um, was wondering, Mr. DeFranza, what specific role will Harbor Light have in the management of the completed project?
All right, before we go, I'm going to go to Mr. DeFranza. Just, Andrew, could you please introduce yourself and, and talk about your relationship to the project, and then take up Counselor Ames' question?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. I'm Andrew DeFranza. What's that?
Okay, those that don't know you, that might be watching at home.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Andrew DeFranza from Harbor Light Community Partners and Goat Hill, uh, and, uh, glad to be here with you all. So thank you for those of you on the call and those of you at home. Uh, and the question, you want me to follow through with the question, Mr. President? Yep.
Please.
Um, the, the question is Harbor Light Community Partners' involvement in the project management long-term. Um, maybe as a caveat to that, some of you may know our other projects. So we operate Harbor Light House downtown, uh, in Ward 2, and Turtle Creek and Turtle Woods. Uh, so, uh, you may, folks at home may know of people who live in the buildings or have lived in them, uh, how people you care about who are affiliated with them. Um, so that's, that's a good reference point, though we do things around the region. Um, so we're in the Briscoe, uh, situation, we're a part owner, uh, long-term. So, uh, we're a part owner with the Beacon, uh, properties. We will not be the property manager. Beacon, uh, communities will be the property manager. Uh, they currently manage Jaclyn Towers on Rantoul Street, uh, after a renovation sometime in the last, I want to say, five years, though time lately seems like a funny thing. Um, and so they manage that building now, as well as many others around the state, uh, in the country. We will have an ongoing role, uh, operationally in the resident services in the building. Uh, so we have some pretty interesting, uh, supportive service models that we've sort of carved out to support especially lower-income seniors in affordable housing settings. And so we'll continue to have an operational role in the, uh, in how the services are delivered and constructed, and how the partnerships work, probably similar to some of the ways things work for us at Turtle Creek and Turtle Woods. Um, but Harbor Light's crew won't be, um, you know, fixing the faucets or plowing the snow, that sort of thing, which we do in the other locations. So part owner, long-term, and resident services, uh, on an ongoing basis.
That's great. Um, so what percentage of the ownership will be Harbor Light, just curiously?
20.
Okay. Thank you. And so from there, um, and Beacon, well, you're a not-for-profit, correct?
Correct.
But Beacon is a for-profit corporation, just to, so just so I understand.
Yep, no, that's true. Beacon is a for-profit.
Okay.
Harbor Light is a not-for-profit, right?
Okay, thanks. So, um, why, where did you come up with, uh, in the proposal, the seven, where did the $700,000 come from? Where, where, how did you determine that and the $250,000 of the other housing funds, just so we understand?
Yeah, no, there's, there's no, um, there's no rationale for that. Uh, so when you're, you're building, uh, you're building a stack of a budget, most of the money in that 42 million that Heather referenced is really coming from the, the state and the feds through the Long Come Housing Tax Credit. Um, so typically, you're starting with the big chunks, you know, if it was a bar chart, with the big chunks of money, the Long Come Housing Tax Credit, the historic tax credit in this case, this is the first one of those we've done. Um, so there's a huge amount of money from the historic tax credits to preserve the building, um, and different state, uh, subordinate affordable housing money. So usually you're chunking that off and trying to close it so that it balances. And as you get to the end, um, of thinking about it, you're thinking about what's available regionally or locally. And so you start to make an assessment of, okay, we're this, we're here, here's where we are, we're going to need, let's see if we can ask for this much from this group and this much from that group. So you're really trying to build a, a tapestry, as it were, of, of capital to make the whole deal work. But there was no, the 700 is not tied to something specifically. Um, that's not how that, that's, that's not the way that that came about.
No, thank, thanks. And, um, how is the financing coming for this project and sort of the timeline for that?
That's a great question, uh, Counselor Ames. So the, the historic tax, it's actually moving, these things generally move very slowly, but in a world of these things moving slowly, this has moved very fast. Some of that, I think, is, is because of the great response of the city. Uh, so we're able to get it permitted, um, very quickly and, and, uh, get it through design and various committees, uh, planning, design review board, parking and traffic, uh, city council, et cetera, uh, fairly quickly, um, all of which to try to make the first DHCD, which is the State Housing Group's funding round, which happens next month. So amazingly enough, even mid-COVID, we're going to make that, uh, submission, um, which is pretty awesome. Uh, and we have already made the submission to the historic tax credit round and, and, uh, received, made that first submission in April. So everything is, is still as quickly as it could have gone. Um, and so now we'll, now we'll wait and see. If it is funded in the first round, meaning the first round with the state, we'll find out that in July, give or take, next year, so July of 2021, which would mean we might close in the first quarter of 2022, um, and be in the ground essentially spring of 2022. That would be like lightning fast. Um, it's much more likely, uh, that it would be another year, uh, before, that we'd have to go in again in a funding round. That's very common. Um, and that it would then be a year later, essentially 2023. One of the reasons frankly we did the partnership with Beacon, um, was we thought that they would have the ability, that, that their capacity and reputation might accelerate the process for us, um, in those spaces. Uh, and so I was, I was the, I was the whole, I was the last person in the boat on that idea, but, um, retros, you know, retrospectively, it was a really good idea. Uh, so I think we've moved much quicker. We wouldn't have been able to deliver for the community at the pace that we have, I think, if we had not had somebody with that kind of horsepower. So, so wish us luck, uh, at the state level.
No, that's, that's great. I, I just have, um, so when the city, um, if, if this money is approved, the $700,000, will that go to Beacon? Will it go to Harbor Light? Do you have a new entity? And you, and just finally, you feel really confident, um, I just have to ask, because we've gone through so much this year. I give you so much credit for all the work you've done, but you feel confident that this will keep chugging along?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll answer the money question first and then the chugging question second, um, which hopefully nobody tweets that, the chugging question. But, um, so the, 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 the question, um, about how this is, how this is going or where it's going along, um, I think we feel confident about it, although, you know, my level of confidence may not be a measure of anything actual. Uh, that's sort of, uh, you know, I, I have to assume that things are going to keep going, and so we keep trying. Um, I will tell you that we've heard at the state level, um, that the, uh, that applications to the state are down about a third. Um, I think that's actually good news for Briscoe, because usually the competition is about four or five times what's available. So now it'll be, you know, three times, three and a half times what's available. So I think that's good for us. Uh, so we do still feel confident about it. We're not, it's not without, um, concern. We're certainly watching, uh, state economic, uh, forecasts, uh, and particularly, not to bore everybody to tears, but the driver on these deals is really tax credit equity from historic and Long Come Housing Tax Credits. So that has to get sold, uh, and it's, it's subject to market turbulence. Um, so, so far, those things seem to be, you know, holding pretty well, but, um, you have to be realistic about it and, you know, things could get, could get weird. But so far, it's been, it's been stable. Uh, and we, yes, the short answer is, yes, I'm confident that it'll continue to be stable. Uh, your first question was, where does the money go? And so that's a good question. Um, so Beacon and Harbor Light create a new partnership just to hold this building. That's the way that those things work. So like Harbor Light House is in its own thing and Turtle Creek's in its own thing. This will be in its own thing, and the money will go into that bucket, which is the partnership to preserve and rebuild Briscoe School, and then out to the expenses, uh, from there.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Counselor Ames. I'm seeing questions in the chat, Mr. President. I don't know if you want me to respond to those or...
Well, Counsel Flaherty had the question, well, she didn't care of the building now. And Mayor Cahill, we continue to own the building.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Cahill, do you have anything to add?
No, but thanks for asking and, and...
Of course.
Thank you.
You have the hottest job in the city. You're allowed to speak as much as you want.
No, no. Well, you know, I, I will say one thing. When, when, when Mr. DeFranza said, best case is in the first effort, we get the state money, the tax credits, we're all going to go to the wall for it. So we'll see, you know, because that, that year of difference matters. That in a best-case scenario, we're, we're moving people in sometime in 2024. So, you know, we're, we're all going to, we're all going to push and work hard. Um, there's a better verb than chug, but we'll keep working.
Mr. Perry, our budget analyst, you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, not really. The only thing I, I'd add, um, based on my review of everything is, uh, you know, as always, the finance director is adhering to all the regulatory requirements, regarding the finances of how to adhere to the CPC funding. So we're pretty comfortable with that. Um, it is, in relationship to the size of the budget, a pretty large percentage of the funds are going to this, uh, project. But obviously, not only the administration, but the CPC, and I think several of the counselors are pretty supportive of this. So, uh, it is a large commitment. Uh, in terms of my recommendations, I really don't make one with the CPC matters, because I defer to their committee on these things. But financially, it's solid, and I don't see any problems if the council wishes to approve this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Uh, do any members of the public wish to comment or ask a question? Okay, um, before I close this public hearing and ask for a vote, we need to go back to order number 190, uh, and then we need to take the vote to reconsider, correct, Mr. Ailes?
That is correct, to effectively make those funds available immediately.
Right. So we don't want anybody to change their mind tomorrow and say, hey, listen, we're not going to approve the budget, because without approving the budget, um, the money can't get to the Briscoe project and Harbor Light Community Partners. So, Mr. Ailes, when I ask for a motion... for a motion to reconsider, somebody will give me the motion, somebody will second it, and our answer should be no when Ms. Dixon calls the roll. Everybody got that? Awesome. So I would entertain a motion to reconsider order number 190.
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Dixon, a roll call.
Aims?
No.
Feldman?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Flowers? Oh, wait, sorry, I forgot. Yeah. Frady's?
No.
Hasman?
No.
Rand?
No.
Oh, sorry. Rattando?
No.
And Guanti?
No, we all got 100% on that one. Great work. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the funding request for order number 191.
Mr. President, I enthusiastically move that we approve order 191.
Second.
Thank you. And a roll call.
Aims?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers has recused herself. Frady's?
Yes.
Hasman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
And Guanti?
Yeah, so, public hearing order number 191 closed. Emmett, can you hear me tell you mom to come back to the meeting? Now we're gonna move to our next public hearing, which was scheduled for eight o'clock, so we're a little behind. It's on order number 198. Ms. Dixon, can you read that one?
Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request your approval to fund the Racial Justice and Equity Initiative for Beverly. As you recall, we collectively committed in principle to this initiative during the city council's fiscal year 2021 deliberations. This funding request will serve three near-term goals of the initiative. First, to provide training to city and school department staff, boards and commission volunteers, and other stakeholders. Second, to conduct an equity audit, which is necessary and considered a best practice for advancing our goals. And third, a full-time position to coordinate and manage this year's deliverables and work on long-range planning and program implementation. I request that the city raise and appropriate $100,000 to be placed in the executive department budget, along with the transfer of $50,000 from the reserve for unforeseen. This will bring the total requested funding level to $150,000 for FY 2021. A public hearing is required prior to final action by the city council. I ask that you please take action on this request at your upcoming meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Mayor Cahill, would you like to address this one?
Sure. Well, as, just to kind of repeat a bit of what's going on, right, we, when I came to you in early June with the budget that we, the proposed FY 21 budget we'd filed, and in the meantime, the tragedy of George Floyd had happened, and we'd all started kind of examining how to respond as a community. So at that point, I, I made a suggestion that, that we would manage the FY 21 budget in a way as to identify and make available $150,000 at a minimum to, to use, to begin the work of racial justice and equity. And so with, with a focus on a racial justice initiative, you also recall at that point that some of you were looking to, to try to be more certain of things. And Councilor Rand, in working with Mr. Ailes, hit upon an opportunity to, to pull out some money from the proposed budget that after we proposed, after we'd submitted the budget, became clear we didn't need. And that was on a short-term debt borrowing, that, that we saw that we had an opportunity for about $100,000 savings. So that's a, at that time, you folks took that step, knowing that we would, we committed to bring back a request to appropriate, raise and appropriate that amount, in addition to identifying another source within the FY 20 budget for the balance of the 150. So we've done that here. And I guess the things that, that we seen as worthy and timely to spend money on at this point in time in FY 21 include some additional funding for training, for systemic racism, anti-racist training for city staff, for councilors, school committee members, volunteers on boards and commissions. Some of us participated in a first training that we, we found great value in, and we're, we're going to try to offer a number of additional ones. So a piece of the money that we're asking for would cover that. Another piece would cover an equity audit, which has been utilized in other communities as really a best practice, when an organization, in our case, municipal government, is looking to identify what's, you know, where the needs are. Where are we, you know, at this point in time, when, when we look at equity across the community for all people? And an equity audit helps to shine a light on where we are and help to put together both near-term and longer-term goals and action items. So that's another thing that we believe makes sense to do within this fiscal year. The third thing I'd identified when I filed with you last meeting was a full-time position, which would be located or kind of structured, situated within the executive office for an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Director. You have a draft job description that I had committed to share out publicly and that I've been getting some feedback on from people over the last couple of weeks. Continues to be a work in progress. But I can tell you that if, if you approve the request tonight, we will work to, to get that to final product soon, so we can put out a posting and, and bring somebody on board in the coming weeks to help guide that work. One additional piece to this, and it's not related to the, necessarily to the appropriation ask, but it could be. I've been working with some folks on putting together a race equity task force, again, a step that other communities have taken, that allows us to, to get really some, some, from across the community, some real intellectual power and, and energy and commitment to going through that process of, of, you know, looking at where we are and where we need to get to. And it may be that that's another opportunity for use of some of these funds, if there, if there's any available after the other three uses, to help move that work forward. I would say that the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Director, once hired, will participate very, you know, very much in that process with the task force, and could be an individual who helps to kind of support, as staff support those efforts as well. So those are some of the thoughts that come, that, that come with it. And I appreciate your, your attention and time on this tonight. Happy to answer questions now or as they come up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for Mayor Cahill? Councilor Rand? Miss Dell?
Mayor, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay. My, my unmute button lags. It's, so anyway, I just have to be prepared to be heard. Okay. So thank you for letting me speak, and thank you, Mayor Cahill, for that introduction. You actually answered some of my questions right off the bat. Really glad to hear you're open to, you know, community feedback on the position description in particular. And I'd love to support you in any way I can. And I think most of the people that are giving me feedback are, are sending it to you, too. But I'm happy to process that with you at any time, if that would be helpful. And I also just wanted to ask, it, it sounds like, well, first of all, thank you for bringing this to us. I think in July, it seemed like it would almost be impossible to pull this all together by the fall. And here we are, and still in the fall, and you have before us a description and a proposed budget and some really great ideas. An equity audit is just a fantastic idea. So thank you for working, and your whole team for working really hard to put this together, to bring before us. I'm personally excited to approve this funding. And I just wanted to know, do you, do you envision the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Director being hired before any of these other kind of auxiliary support systems? I know you said the, the task force would be sort of after the employee is hired, but how does the rest of it fit with that person coming on board?
Well, thanks for the question, Council. And so let's start with the first one. And as you know, we, we've talked and spent some time on the training piece. And so we're, we're, we're trying to nail down training dates for the next couple of rounds in, I know we were looking at October, November. I don't know if we, I know Martha's been working on that, on our behalf. So I think we'll have the next couple of training opportunities scheduled, if they aren't already. The Race Equity Task Force, my hope is, you know, it's, there are some people who've already said yes to participating, others who I'm, I'm still reaching out to, and others, you know, we've been brainstorming with, with some folks on, on just, you know, what state to make sure to have in the conversation, et cetera. So my hope is to be able to, to share out the makeup of that task force in the next couple of weeks. So that would be before the person's on board. My hope is that, you know, what is it today, October 5th? My hope is we'll be able to have this hire made in about three weeks' time, three to four weeks. You know, we're, we're gonna try to get the job posting firmed up. Whoop, I just lost every, there you are. Trying to get the job posting firmed up in, you know, in this work week, if possible, certainly by early next week. And then it'll be a matter of a few weeks, I think, to, you know, to advertise and interview and hire. So I think a best case is we can get somebody on board by, by the beginning or early part of November. And, and so a couple of these other pieces, we're, we're gonna move as, as we go. I think that's the best way to, you know, I, I don't want to put them on pause until we have the person on board. I guess is, is the best way to answer.
Councilor Rand, you have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, thank you. So then it sounds like, actually, this would be, the, the timeline of opportunity to kind of give feedback on the description of the position is really, what, maybe within the next few days? Is that accurate?
Yes. I mean, we, we shared the description with over 500 people about two weeks ago. I, I've gotten good feedback from, you know, from a number of people and, and, you know, continue to look at that and, and, and see how it, how it squares with, you know, with what, what we put out, what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm happy to talk further with you. I'm happy to take you up on your offer, put it that way, of having a, a further conversation.
That's great. Yeah, I think the main source of kind of, I don't know, maybe some, some hesitancy on having the, the position report to your chief of staff, I think, is, is probably the most detailed question that I've received. So I'm sure you're, you know, feel free to comment on that. And also, we can talk more about it in the next few days.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say briefly, I mean, I, I, I think that that concern is, is one that, that doesn't, it doesn't, well, it's understandable. But it, it doesn't reflect a, you know, an understanding of how we work in here. I'm standing at my desk, and let me just point, the, the chief of staff's office is right there. And, you know, the, the point of the chief of staff being who the person reports to, you know, in, in, in first instance, is not about there being a buffer between the person and me. I mean, I would expect to be in regular, you know, ongoing conversations with this person once they're hired. It's more about making sure that on, on details, you know, they're, they're able to get answers they need and move things without having to wait, you know, wait needlessly. So that, I, I, I think the sensitivity around that is, is I appreciate hearing it from people. And I, I'll try to, you know, try to kind of communicate back with folks about, you know, how we really anticipate it working. We're, as you know, we're all a team in, in this office. And, and so, yes, the, it's, the, the intent is not to provide a buffer or a barrier. It's more just to facilitate the flow of work. And, and I can tell you that, you know, we're all gonna be talking on a, on a regular basis on, in an ongoing fashion. You know, I'm sure daily in many instances and multiple times a day. But it, you know, it's, that's how things really already work here.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. Councilor Hausman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have, I guess, three questions for the mayor. They sort of all break down into the city council's role relative to, to the subject matter. So I'll just sort of read off all, all, all three of them in a sense. One is, you know, given the job description, what, which doesn't really specifically reference the city council, how do you envision this role, or the position of, of the role of this position in relationship to interaction with the city council? I guess you'd say that's maybe one question that could go in a couple of different directions. Second question is, what is the role, as you envision it, for the city council in the training that you've been referencing, some of which has already apparently taken place? Because I don't have any clarity or, or really knowledge around, around that piece. And then the second is related to the Racial Equity Task Force. I understand it hasn't been fully formed, I guess, but perhaps you can provide some examples of, of who would be, maybe it's by description of, of, of the, of the, of the kind of person, but maybe it's in some instances, the specific person. Who's on it? What are the goals of that, of that task force? And can you provide a little bit more transparency or clarity around, around that? Thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Councilor Hausman. In terms of the council's interaction with the person, once, once the position is filled, again, assuming your support here, you know, I, I would say that all municipal employees and certainly everybody who works in, in the executive office, you know, everybody works for the city. You folks as elected officials, it's important that, that you're able to forge and have strong relationships with, with these folks, including this position. You know, you all have constituencies, and that's, that's an important thing that, that as a, you know, as a, a branch of our, of our municipal government, you've got access to and the ability to, to work with and, and kind of arm in arm when, when, you know, whenever possible, help move the city forward. So if, if you have a thought about any type of, of structure that you don't see, or any type of language, you know, to, to include as one of the, one of the job responsibility pieces, please feel free to share that to me. But I, I think, as you know, and it certainly will be our goal, that the person in that position will be a resource to the city council as a whole and to councilors individually. Second question, the first training that we did, we kept to, to municipal staff, and we wanted to see how the, oh, and, and a few members of the Human Rights Committee, as they brought the, they brought the training organization to us. So we, we tried to keep it to a, as I said, just staff and, and some members of the HRC. Now that we've, we've done that, Council, Councilor Rand, were you in it? I'm trying to remember. It's all a blur now. You, you were in the training as well, right?
I was there, and Councilor Flowers was there as well, filling in for President Guanti.
Okay. So thank you. We, we had, you know, Councilor Rand had worked with, specifically, and Councilor Flowers, please don't let me overlook anything you've done, had worked specifically with some of the HRC members. So it was department heads, members of the HRC, two of your colleagues, and a number of our police officers and firefighters. So it was a really valuable training. I think we, we all, you know, we all learned and took some, some great value from it. And so at a minimum, we're looking to go with the same organization for two more rounds, two more trainings. And once, as I, as I said, I think the dates have been at least, at least tentatively set, but the goal is to reach out to you, you other councilors and ask you to sign up for these if you can. One of our thoughts is to try to offer one during the day and one in the evening. I'm not sure, you know, how that's gonna work in, in this timeframe, but that's one of our goals. So city councilors, school committee members, and a continued attempt to bring more staff and, and in this, in this instance, also board and commission volunteers into the mix. We did have a representation from the school department, Dr. Trochik, Dr. Flaherty. I think Mrs. Montivecki was part of it as well, as, as both of, no, I'm sorry. As both of, no, I'm sorry, we had Mrs. Oliver from the middle school and Mrs. Taylor from the high school. So we had a number of the school administration in there as well.
Mrs. Montivecki, Mr. Mayor, you were correct.
She wasn't, okay, I thought so. So at any rate, I think it, you know, it proved itself to be a real value and we're going to be getting in touch with you real soon about these upcoming dates and to see how many of you have the ability to join us in one of those trainings as well. The third question was about the task force. So yes, you know, in the spirit of borrowing other people's really good ideas, as I said, other communities have taken this step and some of the language is not mine, but it comes from our neighbors in Salem. And so I'm looking at the same thought process, a diverse membership task with engaging the community, identifying short and long-term reforms, developing an action plan to achieve greater racial equity in our community. The task force will carry out a thorough review of city policies, services, and ordinance, as well as inequities in community systems, and will report out clear recommendations, including ways in which success will be measured in an equity action plan. So that's the basic framework and what we're hoping to try to accomplish with it.
How many people are you thinking would be on the task force?
Yeah.
How does that task force relate to the position in front of us, consideration?
Yes, so, you know, we've got a working list of, as I said, kind of stakeholder profiles and individuals, and it's looking to be in the range of mid-20s number of people. It is certainly important that we have a strong representation of our communities of color, of kind of all ages. And so that's something we're trying to achieve. In addition, I'll be, and I've mentioned this to the council president, looking for for his help in identifying a couple of members from the council to participate. We're looking to have a number of people from the school department to participate, and so Dr. Trochik's working on that. A representative from the school committee, some representation from our police department, we're trying to kind of nail down that number and who that might be. Representative from the social services realm in the community, from higher education, from healthcare. I will be asking our legislative delegation, Senator Lovely and Representative Paracella, if they'll be able to participate. Representation from our faith community. And that's kind of, that's the several different profiles or categories of people.
And what's the, what do you sort of envision as a timeframe for their work and how their work would dovetail with the position that we're considering?
So I'd say several months up to a year. And as I said, I believe that the person, again, assuming support and approval here tonight, the person once hired will be a participant in this process as a member of the task force and will likely be charged with supporting the work of the task force in a staffing capacity. That's why I said that we also may identify and in talking with Mayor Driscoll about this, she suggested that it probably is worth a little bit of an investment in some consulting support as well to move the task force work forward because it's a pretty healthy chunk of work to, you know, to take on. So that's why I mentioned that there's a potential fourth use within this fiscal year for the money we're talking about tonight. You know, it's likely that the money we're talking about tonight will annualize out, actually, let me say that differently. Some of it will be one-time expenditures. So the hope is even though, you know, it's, we'd be spending up to the $150,000 in about eight, eight and a half months. The hope is that it will still roughly annualize at 150, because the other two to three categories can be one-time expenditures.
Thank you for your answers, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
Thank you for your questions, Councilor Hausmann. Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to really thank Councilor Rand for, and your, and Councilor Flowers for putting this at top of mind for all of us and finding the funds and pushing this forward. I think we'll be a much stronger city for it at the end of the day. I have just a bunch of questions to try to better understand what, where we're at and where we're going. So the first question is, so you had the four identified areas, the training, equity audit, full-time position, and the task force. And you said "we" identified. Just curiously, who is "we"?
It's been our team here at City Hall. And in fairness, it's also been members of the Human Rights Committee and your council colleagues, specifically Councilor Man and Councilor Flowers.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's really helpful. And I would, I commend you on the thought of using a consultant because for this work in a bunch of ways. A, a consultant to really identifying the kind of audit that will best function for the entire city and help you to potentially help you with the hiring also. So that even to identify the scope of authority for this position, so the, so that you have a role that will dovetail with the rest of government, yet have some that person will have some understanding as to the decisions and the policy, policies they can potentially put forth moving forward, so that you have a, you know, just a clear and more easily functioning organization. So, and even just in when you're hiring, to make sure that you're reaching out, you know, did you have any idea how you were going to post this?
Yes, I mean, I'll take any and all suggestions on that front, but you know, we're, one of the things that we know is that in order to be, in order to find and achieve greater diversity, if that's the right word, but you know, in order to, as we move forward, start to have more people in this community see themselves represented in their city staff and on boards and commissions, et cetera, we need to be more thoughtful and we need to go, you know, more far and wide with posting. One of the things, and it depends on, depends on any given positions, you know, type of background necessary, right? It depends on the type of profession. But there are a lot of colleges and universities that we can tap both regionally and beyond, but certainly regionally, where we can find more qualified candidates for more diverse backgrounds than we typically see. And so to my mind, beginning to forge relationships with career placement offices at these colleges and universities, with deans of various schools within them. And then, you know, not have those be one-offs, but those to really, you know, be more the type of working relationships that grow. And so, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of colleges and universities who do a great job with their undergrads who are coming in looking for entry level. We don't see this as an entry level position. So there are also career centers who work with their alums in an ongoing fashion. So that's an opportunity. There also are, you know, government boards, and certainly we, you know, we will post it, you know, at a minimum on the MMA website, which is our statewide body, as you know, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which supports cities and towns throughout the state. So, you know, we're, the brainstorming on just where and how to post is something that I think is still to come. And so any thoughts you have about a place you're thinking that it would make sense for us to advertise? Or anybody you think it makes sense for us to reach out and talk with directly who can share the posting and information about Beverly? You know, we really, and we also need to convince really talented people that Beverly's the place they want to be. And, you know, we, and I say this not out of any, I don't want anyone to construe this as negative. We get a lot of wonderful people, very incredibly talented people, both working in the city already for our city and available to consider for a position like this or any other. But I think, you know, to answer your question, we want to be as comprehensive as we can be in getting the word out and making sure quality people will apply, you know, when the opportunity comes.
That's, that's great. And I've had a couple of conversations with people who I know, we can follow up, but I think there are, for instance, historically black recruiting sites, and I think that they're, that making sure that this, as you recruit, you do it in a way that where you tap into whether it is some consulting or some people be helpful. Because at the end of the day, you want to make sure that you have a person who has the talents and the skills that you want long-term. So one of my, and as you, and as you said before, Mr. Mayor, the needs are going to change over time. So just understanding even the length of contract that you might have for this person. Because you know, the person that gets you started might not be the person that has the right skills and talents five years down the line. So thank you, you know, for listening. And then the one other thing that I would add to your task force would be some people from the business community and people who work surrounding employment. We had Mary Sarris here. And even someone, and that's not Beverly, but she certainly has a grasp on that. Perhaps someone from North Shore Innoventures. But just, I think, even someone from a local bank. Because I think access to business opportunity and capital is a massive piece of this puzzle and the work that needs to be done as a city moving forward. So I, you know, I sent you an email, you definitely heard what I had to say, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that you're going to really work hard to make sure we hire the right person and give that thought moving forward, because I think that's critical to the success and understand, them understanding their power in the organization moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I think that's particularly well-stated, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Council Flowers, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And first, I do just want to apologize publicly to you, Mr. President, and you, Mr. Mayor. I had like an out-of-body experience and spoke as if I was in a work meeting and spoke out of turn, and so, and out of order, so just want to apologize for that and let you know that I won't do that again, and assume I'm at a work meeting. Mr. Mayor, I just want to echo some of the words of appreciation that have been spoken to you and your team for working on this position. I had a question, and I recognize this might feel a bit like, you know, jumping down the road too far, but I wonder if just you could share a little bit about your and your team's vision of where this could go. Would you envision this growing potentially into its own department at some point? Here in Beverly, as we do this work, or is it too soon to say? I just was curious what you see in that regard.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say that it couldn't or wouldn't, you know, one day show itself to be appropriate to do so, but I, that's not, you know, our goal is not to, you know, make this step one of a two-step process. It's really to, you know, to start this journey. I mean, I think the task force, the equity audit, and what comes out of that work will help us to know better. And, you know, I neglected to say it, and it just really occurred to me, you know, we all have spent some time acknowledging and identifying that, you know, that there are a lot of public health issues wrapped up here. So there's just so much work to be done. So to answer your question, it's not something that I would foreclose or be averse to, but I think, I think we, you know, this is a big step right here. I think, you know, I don't know if "big" is a fair word. This is a needed step and an appropriate step. And I think we'll learn and know better as we travel this path together. That makes sense.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Mr. President, may I ask one more question to follow up?
Of course.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Mayor, this is not so much a question, it's just sort of circling back to say that I would be happy to continue to be in conversation with you as well. I think some of the feedback that I got, I feel like also went to you, and something I've been thinking a lot about and would love to just maybe put on the table for us to think about together as a city, is even shifting perhaps how we think about the job title to being something more along the lines of like an anti-racism, justice, and equity director. And just to think about the way that diversity and inclusion, I've been thinking a lot about, and I think we have been thinking a lot about, the way that even those terms sometimes tend to center whiteness as the norm. And I think, you know, we're together, we're really in the process of moving past that. So just wanted to put that on the table for our mutual consideration in the future.
Thank you, Councilor.
Flowers? Anybody else? Mr. Perry, this has a financial impact on the city. Do you have anything to comment on it?
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. President, I wrote to you last week with my recommendation on this. Financially, you'll be doing $100,000, if you pass it, $100,000 of reasonably appropriate funds, as the mayor indicated earlier, consistent with the work that Councilor Rand did with Mr. Ailes during the budget season, where we freed up some of that money. The other $50,000 comes from the Reserve Fund for Seeing. There are sufficient funds in there to handle this, so the hundred, there is sufficient funds for the $150,000. The only other thing I'd add to all the comments, I think we all agree this is a challenging times, and I think from a public policy perspective, this is really a wonderful idea for us geeks or public policy people. I think we're seeing other governmental entities doing similar type of activity, establishing whether it's offices or positions elsewhere. And I'm kind of excited to, if you should pass this, to see how the direction goes and quite frankly, to learn a little bit myself. So bottom line to it, from a financial perspective, I have no problems. And, Mr. President, I would recommend it's adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilors, members of the public?
Yeah.
Bins? Name an address.
Yeah, I got my head up. George Bins, 51 Baker Avenue, and I've been here for 53 years, so, and around. It sounds like a collection of good ideas have been thrashed around, but it doesn't sound like it's been thought out well enough to make this step. It seems premature. The kinds of things that don't seem to be covered well are, for instance, there's an equivalent position in the school department. Why do we need two? And I'm used to the commercial world where situations like this come up all the time. We went through this many years ago with the sexual harassment concerns. And it was a function that was taken over and incorporated within human resources. And to Councilor Flowers' comment of having a separate department, we already have a department, it's called Human Resources. And this should be part of their activity. So hiring somebody to do a job that we haven't defined yet seems a bit premature. And it also seems a bit odd that you've got somebody earning a salary of $150,000 reporting to somebody that's earning $90,000. Kind of a backwards way of running a business. Thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
If I could. So thank you, Mr. Bins. A couple of things. One, I would love to get coffee with you because, you know, because A, I value your thinking, and I'd love to, you know, have you help me kind of strengthen what we're trying to accomplish if the council goes that way tonight. I will say, as I think you understand, Mr. Bins, that the position won't pay $150,000. That, you know, the thought of spending $150,000 in this fiscal year in an eight-and-a-half-month window anticipates a roughly $15,000 expenditure on training. It's unclear to me yet what an equity audit, you know, will cost, but there's a real cost there and 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 if we utilize some some temporary consulting help to help us. Shape and move forward the task force work, that would be, you know, that would be included. We, you know, I don't anticipate advertising the position. For anywhere near the the amount that, you know, would lead us. Salary and benefits into the neighborhood of a hundred fifty thousand. That's just, that's not what we can afford. That's not what we'll do. You know, my my inclination is is we're going to advertise this at a, you know, at a, and and it's not nailed down, but in a. Seventy seventy five thousand dollar start point and and we'll see, we'll see what it, you know, what it takes to get the quality we need. So, you know, that's, you know, that's, and and, you know, we see comparatively what people in this in this sector are making in other communities. So, you know, certainly that's not what we're looking to do is is spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars on a position. But just, you know, just to share that. And and again, I I would really love to follow up with you. Because you and I have known each other a long time. I I really respect your thinking and I think we could. I I could certainly benefit from from having a follow up conversation with you.
Okay, put me on the committee. I'd be glad to work with all your people. And I think the other point that you're raising is, or that I'm trying to get to is. The way this is presented, it was to hire a hundred and fifty thousand dollar director. Now you're telling me it's not that.
No, no, I'm I'm sorry.
And again, to the point of one of the counselors made, I think it was Councilor Ames. That we should consider outside consultants and get a canned program. We're doing that right now as a member of the Parking and Traffic Commission. Every two years I have to go through this ritual about watching the TV, passing a test on. Issues relative to. How do you have to deal with the government in the system? So this has been established, and I think this would be another way to get this started. Without getting. Too deep into it without having it well thought out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Binns. I have a Mr. Neil Levine. Name and address for the record, sir, please.
Good evening, Council and members of the public. My name is Neil Levine of thirty six Thorndike in beautiful Ward Two, Beverly. I just wanted to applaud the Council and Mayor for taking joint action to support all the elements. My comments really are on the on the position. I'd like to commend the mayor for broad dissemination and. Of the job announcement that allowed us for comment. And I thought it generated that a lot of thinking has actually been done already about it. I had a few specific comments and then a question. And some of my specific comments have already been covered by other counselors. The first one was on the scope. You say in the in the description itself, it talks about a resource for all city. Departments, boards and commissions, but does not mention directly the the city council. And given the ferment and activism by this council. In your comments, you do suggest that it is seen that way. So the question would be, why not add those words to the actual position description? As one sec, the other thing that struck me was that. In public debate and in the field, again, I'll say I'm not an expert on in this area at all, but a an informed observer or try to be. At some point in the description, might it be appropriate to add a section on definitions? And how does the town, City of Beverly, define equity, diversity and inclusion? And how do you want those terms to be kind of lived and breathed by the person who is. Charged with this mandate and also more broadly, how the community should think about these issues? Third was the process, and I think Counselor Ames talked about the benefit of a broad dissemination to generate. A competitive pool and the process by which you identify networks of people. I think the best way to do this is to contact folks that are deep into this work and bring their networks to bear. The last thing I would say really was hadn't planned to say, but the first mention of this racial task force. And its composition is very intriguing, a great idea. I think the question that occurs to me is to whom does this council charge to report? And that even if it's reporting to the city or to the council, that it be encouraged to make recommendations. Not only to government, but to business, to the school committee, to law enforcement as part of its charge. In line with the keeping of the resolution in action taken by this council on declaring a racism a public health emergency. My last comment is really a question for you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of. Your expectations for these three or four reforms, just to give voice to what you feel. Beverly will be like in a year from now if these things come to pass. And I'm very curious about the council responding to that as well. Thanks very much for listening. I appreciate the time.
No, thanks for being here, Mr. Levine. Council Feldman, we haven't heard from you all evening, so you're up.
Thank you. I am I am very excited about this position. And thank you for everyone who, Mr. Mayor, and everyone else who's done the work in bringing this to the table here tonight. I I had a question that might be more directed at Ms. Barrett, but I was wondering if a position. Like this within the administration would. Give us more of an opportunity for more grants and funding for if we have somebody on staff that would. Make us eligible in certain ways. I'm not sure if there's any angle in terms of additional funding for a position like this. Outside of Beverly if we commit to it. So that was my question was getting the insider edge on the money on this.
Thanks, Ms. Calderon. And as you asked your question, Ms. Ms. Barrett appeared on my screen. Ms. Barrett, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that this position could only help facilitate finding more grant funding related to. Racial injustice equality. As far as grants funding this position. I would say the majority of the time grants do not fund salaried positions. That's a a unique thing to find. But I do certainly think that this position could lead to more grant funding opportunities for the city for different initiatives, programs and projects. And particularly whatever candidate is is ultimately given an offer and hired. I would hope that they would have some grant experience and. And that their experience could lead us to some new grant funding opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Anybody else? Then I'll close this public hearing and ask entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request.
Second.
And Ms. Dixon, a roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And.
I am a yes. Ms. Dixon, we have one more public hearing this evening on order number one ninety nine. So we'll call that public hearing to order. Could you please read that?
Dear Honorable City Council, I recommend that the city establish the position of Sustainability Director to support and guide. Beverly's many sustainability efforts, chief among these to aggressively combat climate change by mitigating municipal and citywide greenhouse gas emissions through an array of strategies. I have long believed in the value of and need for this position within our city. And I am pleased to share that we recently secured a three year private donation to support this effort. This generous donation is structured to support eighty percent of the position cost in year one. Sixty percent of the position cost in year two and forty percent of the position cost in year three. The intent being that in year four, the city will fully absorb the cost of the Sustainability Director within its operating budget. This one hundred thousand dollar donation from the Monarch Group LLC will cover eighty percent of year one cost to fund this position. Massachusetts General Law requires approval of the city council to expend this donation as intended by the donor. In addition, I request approval of a transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from the reserve for unforeseen to cover the twenty percent not funded by the donation. I request the transfer be placed into the executive office budget. The transfer will require a public hearing prior to final council action. I respectfully request that you set this public hearing to take place at your next regularly scheduled meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. And this is the public hearing. So Mayor Cahill.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So as I I think, I just want to double check. I think the amount of the requested transfer is fifteen thousand one five. And and that reflects that we're looking at the balance of the fiscal year. Our hope is to have this position filled this month. And so we'd be looking at a. At a funding commitment from October to October, right? So the fifteen thousand should cover us to end of fiscal year. We're anticipating that the position will pay in the range of eighty 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 five thousand dollars in there. And when we know whether the the new Sustainability Director selects an individual or a family health plan. That'll help us nail down the total cost of the position. And then we also are looking at utilizing this this pot of money. To pay for our Urban Sustainability Directors Network membership. Which is a a North American, Canadian, American essentially network of sustainability directors. We've been members of it now for a couple of years. We designated somebody to be our Sustainability Director. That that is Mrs. Bellotti. She did that. I asked her to do that when she was our. Constituent Services and Program Manager position. And and so, you know, it was always a on top of everything else she was doing. She's still technically our Sustainability Director as Chief of Staff. But here with a full time Sustainability Director will be really properly staffed for that. The opportunities that the USDN provides. So there's a modest about seventeen hundred dollar annual membership to that organization. That we'll look to pay for out of this this pot of money. As well as in normal times, not so much with COVID, but in normal times, up to two conferences a year. Because those are tremendous opportunities both for networking and sharing out of ideas and and bringing back new ideas. And, you know, also a number of of things that can help both our Sustainability Directors. Personal development and growth on our behalf and also move forward the city's priorities around sustainability. As as you folks know, we talked about it, some of us, you know, in. One to one conversation, but we all talked about it at the last meeting when we presented this. You know, we've recognized for some time, not just me, not just, you know, folks working on it in in City Hall daily. But you also recognize and understand that the work of. Protecting natural resources, the work of quantifying our greenhouse gas emissions and and taking steps to. Decrease them in in a in an effective way that works for the long term. The ability to address our vulnerabilities as a coastal community. When we think of of sea level rise and other impacts of climate change. Some of the heat island effects that 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 tend to be more of a problem in in downtown areas. Things like that, they all really require that we have a person in this position. I think pre COVID, we we may well have done this in the regular FY twenty one budget. Acknowledging the the challenges with, you know, with moving into our budget year. And knowing that the climate action planning process had begun largely with state grant money. I think we, you know, we were kind of holding on this. But then, as I said at the last meeting, somebody brought this this donor to me. You know, on the city's behalf and in in really working through and and coming to understand what the goals are here. This is a fantastic opportunity. The person, again, wants to remain anonymous and and that's something we'll honor. Person is is actually, I'm pretty sure, watching the meeting and has has. Said that they'll be ready to wire the money to to a city account when they see the vote, if if you folks, in fact, vote to approve this. So we're all very excited. It's work that we know is important. Just to recap the the structure. The person will be donating us a hundred thousand dollars. And that will cover up to eighty percent of the costs of the position and and kind of some ancillary costs, as I mentioned. And the person is is committing themselves to donate up to. Donate money to cover sixty percent of the cost in a second year and forty percent of the cost in a third year. Which is a, I think, a real thoughtful way to help us move to being able to support the position entirely by year four. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to try to answer them.
Council, questions for Mayor Cahill from members of the city council. Council Houseman.
Yes, Mayor, it doesn't, my question doesn't bear directly on this fifteen thousand dollar. The order for the fifteen thousand dollar transfer, but it does. More generally relate to the the nature of sustainability about the city. Can you tell us where the city stands on. Hiring a broker and on the Green Municipal Aggregation Program that was voted on by the council a few months ago?
Sure. Thank you, Councilor. So. One of the things that this position will do, the individual when when filled. Is become point person on the Community Choice Aggregation, sometimes called Green Municipal Aggregation efforts. And and, you know, we we have this conversation both. At the CEAC Clean Energy Advisory Committee level over, you know, several months. And then and then in the city council forum earlier in the in the, I guess it was right before the summer break, was it, right before the the brief break? And so you folks all, you know, have have had a desire to see this move forward. And you, Councilor Houseman in particular, have have been a leader on this, and I am appreciative of that. We did hire our broker consultant in mid July. And so they're they're on board. And we've met with them. As a follow on to them getting kind of ramped up. And everybody's kind of got their their action items from that last meeting. We are going to be meeting with them again in the next couple of weeks. And our hope is that by then we'll have this person on board, you know, to be introduced to and to to take. To take the reins, because as I think you all understand. We have myself, Mrs. Bellotti, any number of department heads who and and Mr. Barrett. Who all have to kind of pick up and move forward with different pieces of sustainability work. And everybody's game for it, but everybody also is, you know, a whole lot of other balls in the air. So this person will take the reins of GMA. They also will step right in and join our Assistant Planner, Emily Hutchings, as kind of co point people on the climate action planning process. And as you, as you all know, there are just a number of things. Ms. Barrett has been particularly. Has been on her own carrying all the work around. EV charging station opportunities as well as, you know, carrying a a real heavy heavy load on the on the EV bus procurement process. So these are all things that our Sustainability Director will be able to to step right in and and. Take things off some people's plates, not entirely, because we all have appropriate roles to play in moving these things. But, boy, it'll be fantastic if if, you know, if you folks do approve this tonight and we're able to bring a very talented person on board and. You know, get ourselves going in that sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I appreciate that. And I'm excited to hear that three months ago, we we selected a broker and are. Move forward with GMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. President Guanti, Guanti has asked me to just step in momentarily. Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, and so now we can open this up to questions from the public. If you're a member of the public and have a question, you could type in the chat or raise your hand and. I'll do my best to see you. Any questions from the public?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Okay, just here, name and address for the record.
I'm still George Binns, and I still live at fifty one Baker Avenue in Beverly, Mass for fifty three years, effective the first of January. Anyway, so you understand where I'm coming from. I'm all in favor of global warming. Because where we're all sitting right now, twenty two thousand years ago, was under a mile of ice. Not a situation we want to return to. But the other half of this problem that bothers me is that. But the other half of this problem that bothers me is that the name keeps changing. It used to be global warming, then it's climate change, now it's sustainability. And basically, the science behind all of this is softer than a boiled grape. If you think about it, the Earth is a closed system, which means there's not much leaving the Earth and there's not much coming in. What's here stays here. And the real challenge is, do we have the resources and the ingenuity to reclaim and reprocess all the material that's here as we use it up? The classic example of this is, right now, the cheapest place to go mine for gold is an electronics landfill. Think about that. That's where the money really is. So talking about sustainability is a distraction. At the same time, I think people need to understand that the greatest joke going around right now starts off with AOC screeching about, oh, the world is coming to an end in 10 years if we don't do something about it, at which point Al Gore chimes in and says, yeah, that's what I've been saying for 40 years. His movie, The Inconvenient Truth, has 39 eras in it. Nine of those eras are so egregious that the movie cannot be shown to children without a disclaimer. So this whole business about C-A-W-A-G-W, concocted Al Gore warming, it's a hoax, and we're getting sucked into problems that we don't need because of it. As I've mentioned before to the city council, and I'll say it again, there is no such thing as renewable energy. Energy is something, you use it or lose it. It comes in two measurements, the quantity, which is usually something like BTUs, or amps, or volume, and a parameter called potential, temperature, voltage, pressure. And when the temperature drops, or the voltage drops, or the pressure drops, you've used that energy up, and it ain't coming back. That's what entropy is all about. At the same time, when they talk about some of this other stuff, one of the favorite ones is, oh, CO2 acts like an insulating blanket. Wrong. There's nothing in space to conduct the heat to. Space is the insulator. The gravity on this planet Earth holds the atmosphere in so that we cannot convect heat to space. So those are another distraction. At the same time, everybody wants to talk about greenhouse gases. There are no gases that act like a greenhouse. What a greenhouse does is to prevent the convection currents, the wind, from carrying the heat away. Just think about how parking your car on a sunny day with the windows up, and you come back, and it's hot. At the same time, if you left the windows open, it wouldn't be near as bad, because the heat has a chance to escape. That's what a greenhouse does. Carbon dioxide doesn't do anything like that at all. When you get around to talking about some of these things, I'm still waiting for someone of these ecologists, climatologists, explain to me what's unclean about plant food. If you think back to your seventh grade life science class, when you learned about photosynthesis, carbon dioxide plus water, a little bit of sunlight, and the presence of a catalyst, everybody remembers chlorophyll, you end up with C6H12O2, oh, six, I'm sorry, O6, which is star sugar, plus oxygen. CO2 is plant food. What's unclean about that? And the latest one that really surprised me as I looked into it is, they're always talking about sequestering CO2. Sounds like a great idea until you do some numbers. Carbon has an atomic weight of 12. I know I'm boring the hell out of you, but anyway, carbon has an atomic weight of 12. You reacted with oxygen to make carbon dioxide, you add two sixteens to it. Now you've got something that's an atomic weight 44. You've increased the weight of this stuff by a factor of almost four. And the same time is, if you had the energy that you could cool it down to something less than 110 degrees Fahrenheit, which ain't easy, you're not doing that in your local frigidaire, you could turn it into dry ice, and you still end up with a volume that's about five times what you started with. So you take the coal out of the ground, and you don't have a big enough hole to stuff the carbon dioxide back into. It's another one of these fabricated jokes that people don't pay attention to, and they just gloss over it, and this is why I get concerned with all this junk science. And you say, okay, that's not bad, we can live with that, we can play with that, until you start to make rules and regulations. Right now, the state senate and house are considering a transportation climate initiative, which really means it's a carbon tax on all fossil fuels. So the price of your gasoline that you drive around in is going up, the price of your heating oil is going up, the price of natural gas is going up. And if you want to get to one of these situations where you're carbon neutral, that means you're going to have to change out the heating system in your house to go electric. And the electricity bill is going to go up, because all these supposed green sources of electricity are subsidized with your tax money, and they're also subsidized by the fact that the utility has to buy it from the wind farm at the price that they sell it for. Interesting. So we've got a problem there. The other one that gets really scary is the one that Brookline just pulled. They are banning all the new connections to natural gas. Starting to get closer to home, and the question comes down to, what other bright ideas does somebody have that they're going to inflict on us, that's going to cost us money, either in taxes directly or indirectly through fees that are stuffed into the pipeline way upstream that we don't even know about? And the last one I'll inflict on you is, they just finished building a wind farm off the coast of Black Island, and it supposedly has enough power to generate, can generate enough power to support 2,000 homes at the price of $150,000 a home. Doesn't sound like terribly good deal to me. So before you commit to one of these schemes, and go down the path of doing some other bright ideas, think about what the impact is going to be. What are the unintended consequences, especially in the wallet in your pocket? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Benz. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Mayor Cahill, anything you'd like to add?
I'll answer any further questions you have, but other than that, I'm excited to be in front of you with this proposal.
Great. Mr. Perry, our budget analyst.
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. President, as I wrote to you, I do recommend you do this. I've been advocating for this position for the last couple of years in private meetings, and I know Council Hausman raised this issue a couple of months ago with the green aggregation. I spoke to him as well. It's my view as your budget analyst that the position has the opportunity or possibility to bring back severalfold the amount of money you'd save, both not only for the city, but for the residents of the community as well. I agree with the mayor's comments from my observations. My view was that a lot of people were putting time and effort into this, but it was kind of a potpourri of people on a part-time basis, and it really needs some direction from a management perspective. So bottom line to it is, I hope that the council will support it. I think it's a great idea, and I think I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close out public hearing and ask for a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request. So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Dixon, a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Counsel Hausman?
Yes.
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti?
Yes. That concludes our public hearings. Ms. Dixon, are you ready to go back to communications from his honor the mayor? Excellent. Order number 212.
Number 12. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following citizens to serve on the zoning board of appeals as alternate members. Ms. Margaret O'Brien, 9 Willow Street, Beverly; Mr. Stefano Bosso, 11 Ames Street, Salem. I respectfully request a waiver of the residency requirement for Stefano Bosso to continue to serve as an alternate member on the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Bosso is an architect at a Beverly firm, and his knowledge and experience is an asset to the board. Their terms are to be effective from October 1, 2020, until October 1, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Nice work on that name, Stefano Bosso. Very good. You're working on your Italian pronunciation. Let's refer that to the committee on legal affairs. 213.
213. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Mark S. Ianuzzi, 29 Granite Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, to serve as constable in the city of Beverly for the express purpose of serving civil process. Attached is Mr. Ianuzzi's application, which has been approved by Police Chief John LaLacher. Mr. Ianuzzi's term will be effective from October 5, 2020, until October 5, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the committee on legal affairs. 214. Ms. Dixon? You're muted.
Hi. Dear Honorable City Council, attached to your review and approval is the proposed order authorizing a grant of utility easement to Massachusetts Electric Company that will provide utility services to the new police station. I thereby request the city council adopt this order at your October 5, 2020 meeting, as time is of the essence for this authorization. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Mayor Cahill, do you want to say a word before I ask for a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was getting my papers together. What did I just miss? I was quite appreciative of what you just did, and I think I got distracted.
That's okay. What did I do? Oh, man, I mean, I'm starting to lose it. We have the easement, the utility easement for Massachusetts Electric Company.
Okay, I generally don't get involved in those. Did I miss something?
No. Yeah, I'm going to read it again. Dear Honorable City Council, attached to your review and approval is the proposed order authorizing a grant of a utility easement to Massachusetts Electric Company that will provide utility services to the new police station. I hereby request the city council adopt this order on October 5, so we need to do that this evening, because it's time-sensitive.
Right. I apologize, I should have been listening. But, yeah, I mean, it's necessary to deliver the, to deliver the, you know, the utility to the station, and it's our, you know, our team did all the work on it, and so, on their recommendation, I brought it to you.
Great. You have a great team. I would entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Hausman, sorry.
Yeah, generally, we've done public hearings on these. Is this different because this is city property? Do we not need a public hearing on this matter before we bring it to a vote?
The order says that we do not need a public hearing. It doesn't say we need a public hearing, so I assume that it does not. Would I be correct, Mayor Cahill?
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. I am going to, do you have other agenda items left?
We do, we'll come back.
Let me just check, because you know what, we always have somebody ready to answer the legal questions. Let me just double-check on that.
Mayor, sorry, Mr. President, this is Catherine Barrett, Director of Grants. Mayor, I just wanted to politely interject that we actually, for the electric school bus charging station at the middle school bus depot, we also needed an easement from National Grid, and there was not a public hearing required for that.
Makes sense. I'm going to verify.
You want to verify with somebody else?
Yeah, I'll do that right now, thanks.
Okay, we'll be back. So let's go to order number 215. Ms. Dixon?
Yes. 215. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has received a $2,000 donation from the Friends of the Beverly Public Library, which is to benefit the Nancy P. Robinson Memorial Endowment Fund. There are no restrictions on this gift, which benefits Beverly Public Library. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grants earmarked donations or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on October 5, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to accept the donation and approve Mayor Cahill's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti?
Yes. Mayor Cahill has returned.
Yes. So on that question you just had, because this is a grant of an easement on our own property, it does not require a public hearing.
Ms. Barrett, yes, you were the first one to acknowledge.
I figured I better check with the solicitor, even though I have great respect for the Director of Grants.
I'd like to thank whoever concurred with my legal opinion.
Good. She might be in line for a raise now, Mayor Cahill. All right. You accepted the donation to the library, so now we're on communications from other city offices and boards.
Do you want to take a vote on 214?
Oh, I didn't do that. Oh, right, I'm sorry. Order number 214, I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti?
Yes. Thank you for that reminder, Ms. Dixon. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Dear Honorable City Clerk's Office, this, wait, no, I'm just going to read it from the agenda. City Clerk approval for the presidential state election warrant for the November 3, 2020 election.
And the letter states, Dear Honorable City Council, the City Clerk's Office is looking for your approval of the attached warrant for the November 3, 2020 presidential election. With your approval, the warrant will be posted outside the City Clerk's office, as well as on the city's website, in accordance with the Secretary of State's guidelines. So I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Kent's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti?
Yes. Thank you for that reminder, Ms. Dixon. Communications from other city offices and boards.
216. Dear Honorable City Clerk's Office, this, wait, no, I'm just going to read it from
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti.
Yes. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Oh.
Yes, Ms. Dixon.
Sorry, we have 206.
Oh, 206. Oh, yeah, I'm, not that I'm rushing the night away, because I'm having a really good time. You guys are all doing a tremendous work. So I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from Councilor Hausman.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti.
Yes, that's not a late file, though.
Yeah.
But I saw a late file on my thing. This must be Councilor Hausman's letter that he presented on the 30th? We just need to change the order number?
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion to approve Councilor Hausman and the City Clerk's Office's request.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Councilor Hausman, yes.
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti.
Yes. Communications, applications, and petitions. Order 217, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, we have order 217, application for fortune teller's license. This is a renewal, it's just a new location, but there was a license that was issued already before to Summer Evans, Beverly Psychic, 507 Rantoul Street.
And unbelievably, Ms. Evans has hung in here for two and a half hours. Ms. Evans, would you like to make a comment or introduce yourself to the city council before we consider approving your license renewal?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, and it's so good to see you laughing and smiling.
I just want to thank everyone for, that I'm allowed to be here. And I hope I get approved.
Yeah, you like what you do?
Yes, I do.
Very good.
I love Beverly.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Summer, I mean, Ms. Evans? Hearing no questions or comments for the members of the council, I will entertain a motion to approve the renewal.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti.
Yes. Ms. Evans, you already knew that, because you're a psychic. You knew.
Yes, I, I know it.
Great. Well, good luck with your business. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye-bye. Motions and orders.
Sorry, I have to find this one.
That's okay. I have it in front of me, if you want me to read it, Ms. Dixon?
Sure.
It's a second reading, or final passage, isn't it? Oh, yeah. Order number 1474, final passage in the ordinance amendment, Vehicles in Traffic Section 240-41, parking prohibited at all times. I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance change.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dixon, roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman? Hausman, yes?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti.
Yes. That is all we have on our agenda, correct, Ms. Dixon?
We have reports of committees.
Oh, right. Forgot, that's an added bonus. Report from committees.
Okay, so from Legal Affairs, we have the application for secondhand junk dealer's license, number 195.
Okay, any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve that. If you're in the wall.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti.
Yes.
I think that's the only thing I have.
Great. So that's all on our agenda. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in during this long meeting, but we got a lot done. Four very important public hearings. It was good to hear from members of the public via Zoom. And does anybody have anything to add before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Mayor Cahill, you're good, you're still here. Nothing to add? Okay, we, I've already spoken to Ms. Kent. She's going to try to get us into the middle school library for our next meeting, because they have the capabilities to do it there. And I'm sure Kim and his staff at BevCam, and the IT guys down in the basement at City Hall are getting ready to get us, get us back into City Hall as soon as possible. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for watching at home.